Well, welcome everybody. I'm gonna continue to moderate and let people in from the Zoom waiting room as they show up, but welcome to the second session of Giants. I'm gonna turn things over to Phil and Lindsay and Joy in just a moment, but wanted to let you know our sketches were approved. So you will get sketches for four out of the five sessions. We were unable to get that was if you want to blame someone for the first one, blame me. We did not have enough time to get it in under the wire for the first session, but sketches for all the others, grand total of, I believe, 12 should be coming your way towards the end of this. So you know, we will continue to run the reports and pull the logs out. And technically speaking, if you needed to miss a date in the future, we could probably backtrack and count the date that you were there before. So tonight, Phil and Lindsay enjoy are going to be taking you through the first part of unit two. I am told that our third session will also cover unit two because it is a doozy. So without further ado, Joy and Lindsay and Phil, I will continue to I will continue to let people in and pay attention to the chat, but I'm going to turn it over to the three of you to kick us off for the evening. So welcome, everybody, and Giants team, you have the floor.
All right. So I'm gonna start us off. I'm Lindsay Benzel. I recognize a few of you from our last session. There's more screens on this time. So that's nice. I'm just gonna put up our PowerPoint for today. All right. So welcome, everybody. Oh, whoops. All right. Here we go. Welcome, everybody. This is our network session two. We're going to be covering unit two. There's a lot of really good material in it. So we're really excited for us for you to join us tonight. Here's our agenda, and this kind of follows the agenda that Dave sent out earlier. We're going to check in with you around unit one. We're going to do an overview of our next unit. Phil is going to share a migration story with us about the indigenous people that you'll be introducing your students to in this unit. Joy will share some literacy connections that are going to really enhance your unit. And then for the second half, we'll talk a little bit about regions and resources. We'll have some time to do a little bit of work together, and then we'll follow that up with another book talk and fills PowerPoints around trade and crooked borders. So we're going to start off with just some celebrations from Joyce and things that she's doing in her class, and then we'll turn it over to you to share some of your successes.
Okay. Well, thanks, guys, so much for coming. My voice is a little froggyish, so bear with me. But these are just a couple of things that I've done to utilize the Giants curriculum in our classroom. One is, if you can see, this is my notebook. I have kids, you know, we provide them with a composition notebook, let them decorate it in anything that has to do with Michigan. If it's University of Michigan, Michigan State, if it's a picture that they went on vacation with, Michigan's adventures, whatever, if they, for Holland, it might be a two little time festival, postcard, whatever. Then we let them decorate their their book, and then this is where we put some things in there where if you, I don't know where you are in the curriculum right now, but like we put a lot of other maps in there. We've done some of the thermographs. I don't know what you all can see here, but like we put some different graphs in there, different maps. They just kind of correlate with what we've been doing in our curriculum and and then later on, I think Phil will talk a little bit about, we'll get to some of these is where you starting to talk about regions and things like that. So we put all that in here. And then we also sometimes you can see the picture, Lindsay, did we lose the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I just minimized it so that they could see your pictures.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I can't. I was like, oh, yeah. Now, this again, then you saw a picture of me with when it was not me, but my class, we have the big map, and that is always a big draw is to get everybody out on the big map and just we, we were able to use. I have some students who brought in some Potoski stones. I have some iron ore. We have some copper. We talk about where are these things located in Michigan? We get on the floor and we write in cursive. We write the names of the lakes, names of places that we've been, and we kind of like break it down and start doing like even like a a map key and things like that. So those are just some of the things that I feel like that we're that we utilize to pump it up a little bit more, but just have something that they is tangible to take home. One year we went to Van Andel Museum and they have a, an old fashioned print shop and like they had, they were giving out these bookmarks, and these were on the back. It was talking about Michigan statehood, some of the state symbols and things like that. So that's just another way of something for them to be able to take home something as well. But those maps are available, and I know that if you know, that the nice big floor map, there's different sizes, but that's something if your district wants to look into, Phil has some great resources for that, and it's great just to be able to share those with other teachers in your building, but that's always a big draw for us to get that map out and do some exploring about the great state of Michigan.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Joy about the resources that she shared?
Last time we mentioned, I thought we said like if we were interested in getting one of those maps, but then I don't know that that went anywhere. Because I would love to have one of those maps, but I don't know where to get one or how to get one or who to get it from or.
I'm gonna add that in the chat, just we can something we can go back to and look at and as a way for us to just keep track of what we need to do to follow up next time. Okay. But that's a great question. Thank you.
And Karen, yeah, that was me.
Changing my PowerPoint about it.
Yep.
All right. So we're gonna take some time to just share some of our successes in the unit. So we've got a couple of questions that we're going to look at. So if you could, we're, I'm gonna put you in breakout rooms in just a second here. But if you could think about one or two of these questions on your screen that you might want to discuss with your with your peers, we're going to spend a few minutes in breakout rooms, just talking about some things that might be going well using the Giants units. Maybe some questions that are lingering, you might want to address tonight. I know everyone is always really curious around pacing. So just where, how, how often are you teaching or where you might be in the units? Or you might share some of your hopes for unit two. So just think about one or two of these questions that you might want to talk with your, with your colleagues about. And then I will put you in some breakout rooms for a few minutes. All right. So we'll spend maybe seven minutes or so just talking together and then we'll come back together and share out. Any questions before we open up the rooms? All right. So let's just take a couple of minutes. Would anyone like to share out with the group? Just something from your conversation that stood out to you, or I heard some really great ideas as I was bouncing around the rooms. Would anyone like to kind of summarize and share out for us?
Well, I'll just say, we just in our group, we just talked about how one, one group had not started yet because they're piloting something else right now, and their great little partner has been doing it. So and they have a student teacher. So just even just, you know, slowly starting, but that's okay. I mean, I think baby steps is great. And then another one is from the UP and just getting settled in for the position at the ISD and Dave, I just want to say Michigan Council of Social Studies could use a rep for the UP. So maybe we could tap into that. I've just put out a bug to say.
We do have one. She just doesn't able to make every meeting. So
Okay.
But we could use a second for sure, because each district does.
Yes, for sure.
I was listening in to each room when I heard some really great ideas around bringing in some outside resources. Karen was sharing how she got some maps from the Department of Transportation and was bringing those in and using those with her kids. So just being really creative with what we've given you to get started with and then really making it your own, which was great to hear. All right. So we're going to, I'm gonna drop a link in the chat for a Google Doc, and this is this is our unit at a glance sheet. So if everyone could just pull that up on that, it might be helpful to have that up as we're kind of talking about the story of unit two. I'm gonna assume that it works. All right. Okay. So units two, if we kind of think about the story of unit two, unit two starts with the compelling question, what, what did resource or what resources and how did resources and trade impact indigenous people's way of life 500 years ago? So we're really gonna dig into the indigenous people in Michigan. So we've got three supporting questions that will help our students with that big compelling question. And we're really gonna be thinking about helping them envision what life was like many years ago. For a lot of our kids, they might not have a frame of reference for this time period. So in the first lesson, you're really going to spend a lot of time getting them to think about how and when did indigenous people live in Michigan? So you'll do a little bit of a read aloud using the Birch Bark House. That book is available in a lot of libraries. So don't feel like you have to go out and buy it. You'll also look at a lot of different photographs and you'll kind of examine one primary source, Alexander Henry Student Booklet. Just to help them start to think about what life was like in Michigan a long time ago, knowing that for them, that's kind of like a big jump. And then in lesson two, you're really going to dig into resources. So you're going to help your students start to use maps to think about where resources were located. And that'll really help build on the work you did around regions in the first unit. So again, you're gonna pull in that Alexander Henry Student Booklet, which Joy is going to talk about a little bit later. And you're going to really be thinking about where did each indigenous group live and what types of resources did they have depending upon their location? And then finally, in the last lesson of the unit, you're going to be thinking about how resources could be traded. So you're going to use your map and your region, work around regions to start thinking about what would you do if you had something that another group needed? So you're just going to introduce the idea of trade, which you'll really build on in unit three. Unit three is all about trade. So some important resources that you might want to think about. I know I always like to look ahead and and prep some big things beforehand. So the first thing is this Alexander Henry Student Booklet. This is a great resource to have printed. It is available electronically. We have a PDF of it as well as kind of like a a PowerPoint that students can type and work in. But if you're able to print copies of this booklet, it's a really great resources, resource for kids. And it's not, it's not really long, but it would take, you know, a little bit of time to print out. There's also these full color resource cards, which you, if you have printing capabilities in color, might want to print and cut. I do have a jam board with these that we'll look at in a little bit. So you could also use an electronic version of this if you don't have color printers. And then finally, you really want to make sure that you've got lots of maps available for your kids for this next unit. So all of the map work you did in unit one towards the end. If you maybe just had those sent home or didn't, didn't collect those, you're going to want to make sure you've got some thematic maps available. And that might be in the clickable. It might also be those one page map activities that Joy showed earlier. If you have those organized in a notebook or a little folder for kids, you're going to want to have those maps available for them to lean on. All right. Joy is gonna share a little bit about some literacy connections. Let me just make sure I'm on track here. Yeah. So Joy is gonna share a little bit about some books that you might want to think about ordering from your local library to help support this unit. Joy, here I'm you.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna go back just for and talk just a little bit about unit one with some books that will support this one as well. But in unit one, one of the things that we had talked about was the book Emma's for Mitten and then compare that with another book. S is for sunshine, and this is for Florida. And we did that because Florida has one peninsula. We have two. You can really use it. I mean, Maine is a peninsula, Texas is peninsula, any of those books will support it. But and this, these are not books that I would read the entire book out loud to. And we've put this in the lesson where we're focusing on certain letters of the alphabet where we're comparing. And when I, when I'm reading this and going over this, this is where I might say, get your notebook out and say, what are some things as we're going over Michigan, you know, we're gonna focus on we're gonna focus on the, that we have two peninsulas, you know, we're gonna, U is for the Upper Peninsula. And we're gonna write, take some notes on some of those things. And then we're also going to compare that with Florida. Included in that are webcams that we have, and I believe one is from Houghton, where you can see later on how much snow they get later on. You can go back and look at the webcam of that. There's also webcam of Mackinac Bridge. There's also a webcam in Florida, and I thought this is interesting. There's a webcam of Florida. It's the, it's at Key West. You've probably all seen it before. There's the buoy out there, the big buoy. So we looked at that and we said, now let's pay attention now in September. What do the people, what is, what, how are they dressed? Now you hope, you know, it's a live cam, you know, so they're dressed pretty decent, but you know, they've got shorts on or they were in bathing suits, things like that. And then it was interesting because we went back and looked at it during Hurricane Ian, and oh my word, I mean, that was really, they could see how much, how powerful that was. And Key West didn't even get hit, you know, but so you could see how much, I mean, the water was completely coming over that little, that area there. But I said, you know, we're gonna go back and look at this again in January and see where we're, what are we dressed like in January? I mean, we're gonna have our coats on or gloves, you know, where it's gonna be cold. And we're gonna still look at that webcam and see just as a way to compare a little bit in in Key West, just to see the difference. So that was one thing. Another one we're gonna, we were gonna be doing, we, we worked really, really hard to try to find books that are truly to vet these and to make sure that they are that they really support the curriculum. And these are just a couple of them. And again, some are read aloud and some are just resources to use. So like this book right here is called Life in an Inishinaabe Camp. And there's another one that's just like this called Life, Life in a, in a Longhouse. And so that's kind of nice to see what it would look like in the winter, the visuals and things like that. So like today, for an example, I had a student from Hope College, she had to teach a lesson in social studies. And so how she utilized this today, I thought this was great because I'm not gonna read this whole. This is not a good read aloud. Okay. My kids would be snoring at this point, at that point. But I loved what she did. She just focused, just she did one picture at a time. Let's, you know, this is, you know, this is the, you know, the base of your wigwam. And then, you know, how it's put together and what it looks like when it's all together. And, you know, they could be taking notes about, you know, she went on it because it went on to talk about other foods in this land and, you know, how is that different from today? So these are just a great resource just to use as a way to break it down. And I mean, it talks about games and that Native Americans and in the indigenous people used all different things, but you have to just hone in on one certain section. It also, I loved, we were talking about Birch Bark earlier, and this is kind of, I thought this is kind of interesting. If you look at this picture, you can see how Birch Bark is kind of like scrolled up like that, like in how it was pliable and they're making baskets out of it. So Birch Bark served a really big purpose in the indigenous world. But I also, we also have, this is another book, Michigan Great Lakes State. And this is great just as an overview, and you can use this as a read aloud, but it's, it's got some great pictures in here. And you can do little bits and pieces of this as well, but this is definitely more of a picture read aloud book. But really, this book gives you a good overview of Michigan. And then we wanted to talk about this because some of these books are older and harder to find. But then I really am so, so thankful that about this book is we are water protectors. And this is a new beer, I mean, excuse me, this is a Caldicott Award, award winning book, the 2021 award winning book. So there's some great pictures in here, and this is just because Michigan is surrounded by all of the Great Lakes, then this is a great resource to use and to talk about the, the culture of the indigenous people and their impact on our state. So that's a good one. And just some of the pictures in here, I'll just try to show you a couple of these, but.
Joy, can I interrupt you really quickly?
Yes.
So near the end of lesson one, you're going to compare how way of life is different for indigenous people now than it was hundreds of years ago. And so this is a great book to pull in as well as some of the resources that you could find in my open book. There's some really great information in there that you could also use for the end of lesson one and, and as well as the book that Joy is highlighting.
There's also another, I didn't, I don't have this with me right now, but there's because like when we were talking about the Inishinaabe with the wigwams and things like that, we need to recognize that the Inishinaabe still exists today, and what is their role today in Michigan and their impact? So I, I feel like that's something I feel like we don't it's hard to find books like that, but also I have found some books that are also bilingual and there's, and they have the the different languages of the either Ojibwe of the Odawa or the Potawatomi. So another one is oh, is it Bow Wow? Can't remember it right now, Bow Wow, but it's about what a powwow bow wow. I think that's what it is. And it, it's like, it, it's very similar to the look of this book, but it is a book about how a powwow might be held today, and they're driving a vehicle, you know, they're driving a truck, things like that to the bow wow, the anticipation of it, things like that. And I think that's, and that is, that is also, that's bilingual. So that's great for the kids to even see that. I think that's really important for them to be able to see that. We also have, this is another resource called I'm a Michigan Kid, and it just goes through the different cities in Michigan. And this this one is this is from Marquette, you know, and she talks about what's, what you, what you're gonna see in this area up here. This person is obviously lives on Mackinac Island. So sometimes I read these just two or three at a time and try to get through, and every time that just spurs more conversation, the kids, the kids, many kids will say, oh, I've been there, I've been there and or, you know, or I have family that that's there. So then they have those connections. And once you make a connection, I think it just stays with you. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna come back later and talk about the legends, Lindsay, because I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later. But one thing I, my class is just doing right now, we started book clubs where you get to meet with another partner and you get to read a book that is two books written by the same author. And so this was a way that I snuck this in there. But Hannah is written by Gloria Whalen, and so is Next Spring and Oriole. So this is a chapter book. This is a great level for third grade, great way to tie in the indigenous story here. The indigenous role here and have, and my kids are really enjoying this. So that's just another way that I, I might not be reading this book out loud in social studies, but I'm integrating it in with literature and it's giving them a little bit more of some prior knowledge when we do get to this part. And so I, I feel like that that's, it's, it's, it's a great resource to be able to use as well. So Lindsay, do I need to go over anything else right now? Or do you feel like that's covering some stuff? I'll try to remember, bring that bow wow, pow, pow, pow wow, bow wow, but because I want you to see the other language in there. There's, I have a couple of books like that, that I'm like, you know, I can even try to pronounce them, but they're really long, but I, I love that the kids get to see that. I think that's so important to be able to see that. So.
Yeah. So, so just to highlight what Joy said, we know that the second unit is all about envisioning indigenous life and then imagining what their lives were like. It's also important that we're highlighting the indigenous people that live in Michigan today and that we're kind of sharing about their culture. So all of the books that she highlighted are great to build background knowledge for your students and also to just help share some really great literature around a culture that may not be familiar to them or may not be visible to them. So I dropped in the chat a couple of links. There's a link to Little Free Library has a site called Read in Color that has a bunch of different books, and I see Karen nodding her head. So I dropped in the link to the section with indigenous literature. Just notice that there's a section for, for kids and then young adult and older, older kids. So just be mindful. I know there's a couple of titles in there that I wouldn't necessarily put in an elementary library, but yeah, you can look through there. And then I also dropped in the chat a few messages above there. We have a list of all of the books that we've selected to support the units. So that's something if you have a school librarian who kind of curates sets of books for you, that's a document you could use to start pulling together some resources. Just know that the most important books that you really should have are highlighted on that third grade units at a glance sheet. So if you see a book on that page, those are the books that you really want to make sure you get your hands on. And then the others are really good resources to have to build background knowledge, but also to bring all the work you're doing in social studies into other parts of your day, because we know that it's tricky sometimes to carve out time for, for social studies. Karen, I think Karen dropped a, a link in the chat for the Bow Wow Pow Wow book too, which is a really.
I know. I love that book. It's so great. And, and just know, we are always on the lookout for more books, but to, to vet them to make sure that they are authentic and that really do support this curriculum. So we're, we're always on the lookout for that. We also try to include articles, magazine articles or different things like that, just to have different sources. So if you ever see one, you know, that you think, hey, this would be great for our curriculum, shoot us an email because again, we're, we're always looking to, to build on the literary resources to support the units.
All right. So we're gonna turn it over. Oh, did anyone have any questions or any suggestions around the literacy connections that we just shared? Or around the story for unit two? Or around the story for unit two? All right. So we're gonna turn it over to Phil, who um, just disappeared. Oh, there he is. Um, we're gonna turn it over to Phil, and he's gonna share a little bit about the migration story. And this is more um, of kind of teacher background knowledge that will help contextualize some of the things that you might be reading or sharing with your students. So um, the work that he's gonna present might not be something you present to your students, but it's important teacher background knowledge for us to have. You're up, Phil.
Okay. So do you see this when I'm holding it up? Uh, the Michelmas book?
A little closer.
No? I.
That's good, yeah.
This is one of these books that talks about the Ojibwe now and tries to relate it to what was going on in the past. It was written by Edward Benton Benai. Who at the time was the director of the Little Red Schoolhouse, which was a initial Abbey. School in Minneapolis, St. Paul. About two miles from where I lived there. So I knew him at the time we had talked about curriculum and things like that. The other thing that I'm on is uh, people were asking about where we get these big maps. And I'm rolling out one of the sample maps that I will show you close up. Like Lindsay said. This presentation coming right now is more for teacher background knowledge. The problem with looking at old maps or with reading books like the Michelmas book. Is that teachers really don't have time to consume that much. And so I'm going to try to pack. A content story into ten minutes that would take you many hours to do. Like I say, it's a content package. So with that. I should try sharing the screen. You see the PowerPoint coming up now?
Yep. You might wanna.
Changing maps? Okay. Like I say, this will be a bit of a drink out of a fire hose. Dave sent a simple timeline around that you could use for taking notes. Or just write down a couple key dates and phrases. But the real point is uh, we've put together a package of history flashcards. Uh, and you can use as many of these as you want. You can use them when you want. You can use them how you want. The website actually has hints about how you go about using these things. So on with the show here. This is content background. Don't focus on the details because the details really, in a sense, are not that important. Look for the big generalization that's going to emerge out of these. So with that. We all know Michigan is unique. It's the only state that's nearly surrounded by some large lakes. We didn't always know that. If you look at a map that was made in fifteen sixty-one, it very clearly shows Florida, Virginia, Labrador. But there isn't a lake on the map. Um, and then in sixteen fifteen. Catholic missionaries and explorers like Champlain traveled west on the Saint Lawrence River. And they came into some great big lakes. Um. They didn't get very far because the Iroquois stopped them from going any farther than Lake Ontario. They called it Lake Iroquois. But the reports from these explorers helped to make this map in sixteen twenty-five. It shows Virginia, Chesapeake, Hudson River, Long Island, lots of details. And up north, it's got three lakes, Lake Champlain, Lake Ontario, and a great big blob that it just called the Grand Lake. Probably something they never saw. They just talked to some indigenous people that had told them about it. That map got copied in sixteen thirty-six, more or less verbatim by another publisher. And then again in nineteen sixteen fifty-four, and again in sixteen ninety-four. In other words, for the whole sixteen hundreds, they kept recopying. No, that's not quite true. Because another mapmaker made a different map in sixteen thirty-six. And again, it shows Long Island, Hudson River, Cape Cod. A bunch of other details, but it doesn't have any lakes. It's a, well, one lake, Ontario. And three big rivers going all the way across the continent. Oh, and a lot of beavers. Because by sixteen thirty-six, the fur trade had started. And that's gonna be an important milestone here. That map got copied three years later in sixteen thirty-nine. And again in sixteen fifty-one. And again in fifty-six, seventy-four, seventy-six. So you had two different maps getting copied by different publishers. And that was the impression of what North America looked like. While they were just copying the maps, a French explorer that we now know, Atien Brulee. Went up the short river that was called Sault Ste. Marie, and he found Lake Superior. A couple Catholic missionaries sailed across it, thinking it would connect them to China. Other explorers sailed north, trying to get all the way around North America. And in sixteen forty-three, a French mapmaker used their reports to make a map. It shows Long Island, Acadia, lots of details on the coast. There's the Saint Lawrence River. There's Lake Ontario, and it does have Sault Ste. Marie in it. And a big body of water that they called Mare Glacial, the, the icy lake. That map got copied by some other mapmakers. Uh, obviously copyright rules weren't working very well in the sixteen hundreds. Jean Nicolay went through the Straits of Mackinac and into Lake Michigan, and for twenty years Catholic priests were traveling all the way around these lakes, stopping at the native villages. Recording their stories. And a mapmaker copied some details. His map actually has five Great Lakes. But he left two of them open cuz he thought they connected to China. Map also shows a huge mountain range running east-west across the middle of the, the continent, roughly about the latitude of Kentucky and Tennessee. You wanna know why Father Marquette was so important? Cuz he took the Mississippi River and he showed that that mountain range didn't exist. That the Mississippi actually went all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico, and it connected with the French settlements down there. And um, mapmaker. Made a map that showed all five of the Great Lakes and the Mississippi River. But you notice something about the Mississippi River, the Rocky Mountains are right next to it on this map. Well, I could keep on going like this, you know, with details. But you see what's happening, that this is really quite a remarkable map, that by sixteen eighty-eight, we actually had five Great Lakes. Um, remember, at the same time, other publishers were publishing maps that didn't show any lakes. Or showed a river going all the way across the continent. And then another map made of the same year showed nine Great Lakes. And you wonder where they got that kind of information. Uh. We've got the name Cadillac in Michigan history. We're up to sixteen ninety-four, he was the commander at Sault Ste. Marie. And in seventeen oh one, right at seventeen hundred, he went down to build a fort in Detroit to help protect the fur traders. About the same time, Spanish monks were starting a mission in California. And this map showed what the Spanish thought North America looked like. Nine blobs for nine Great Lakes. A great big ocean up at the north. And Mexico in great detail, and California as an island. And ten years later, a little bit better map, Mississippi River is in the right place now. And then the map that I held up for you a couple minutes earlier. This map was made in seventeen fifty-five, and we use it in our. Third grade curriculum. We have several activities based on this map. Uh, and there's a reason for it. It actually shows the five Great Lakes. In roughly their right position, so you can actually have students compare what we thought back then with now. But you now know that it took almost a hundred years, two hundred years for us to get the number of Great Lakes right. This map is also extremely useful because it shows the pays. Um, and you have to teach your children a French word, but Joy tells me that they actually enjoy doing that. Um. That patriot is the key word, you know, that pays is the French word for land, and it shows the lands of the indigenous people. And for our story, an extremely important part of that map. It shows the ancient pies did this Ottawa, the ancient land of the Ottawas, way off in eastern Canada. And that's part of the migration story that you will hear from the initial Abbe. Like I say, this map is really important. In unit three, lesson one, we use a zoomed in part to set the stage for the fur trade. But. Uh, you know, it's there because that's when the fur trade started. It's logical there, it's chronologically there. And the map is kind of complicated. It needs some scaffolding. But you could use this map earlier. You could use it to talk about the lands of the indigenous tribes, the Illinois, the Huron, and so on. For that reason, and for those of you that have been asking about where do we get these maps? Send me a note on email and I'll send you this little mini catalog. We'll send this around. But that map is available in four different sizes, including one that you can. Download and print of eleven by seventeen, which is a pretty good size for it. It's also got the Great Big Michigan map with the, that you can put on the floor like Joy showed you earlier. But that map is available in about five different sizes. So we can talk about that a little bit more during the breakout session later. By eighteen oh five. Maps had started to get pretty good, but Michigan still has a kind of a strange shape here, yeah. In fact, you could go all the way up to statehood. And again, this is a map that we will use in unit four. But by the time you get to statehood, we had surveyed the southern part of Michigan. To an accuracy of a half mile. And the northern part, and the Lake Michigan itself has still got a really weird shape. So what is the generalization that we pull out of this? It took almost four hundred years of gradual exploration, trading, mapmaking. Before we started to show the actual shapes of things. And we show how explorers, a variety of explorers, why they were important, that. Marquette was important because of how he established a connection that we didn't know about before, and Brulee was important. As these mapmakers added new information, we kept making better and better maps. Here's generalization number two. Kids learn geography in exactly the same way. You have to be very careful to get the right information in with the first maps that you show them because. They're gonna make a map in their heads, and as they get more information, they can keep adding details to that map. They can keep learning a little bit more about what things look like. And in time, we build a good enough mental map that we can use to understand other things like. Where are the good jobs in Michigan, or the nice houses, or the fun places to visit, so on. So that's the first half of this. Because it raises a really nasty question. If it took two hundred years. To make maps that had the right number of Great Lakes, you know, and it's kind of hard to hide a Great Lake. Should you trust a textbook map that claims to show where the tribal lands were before Columbus? And if you shouldn't, then you probably shouldn't try to communicate to kids that this is a map that they should memorize because it's accurate. You should somehow communicate that this map is good only to get a general impression of what's going on. Uh, this map is actually in our National Atlas. It claims to show the territories of indigenous tribes in seventeen seventy-six. And it's pretty good with the Iroquois. But it has the Potawatomi as uh, ruling all of Michigan. The Ojibwe is being way out here in western Lake Superior, and it doesn't have the Ottawa at all. And yet this is the definitive map in the National Atlas. And then the next nasty question, how could it possibly show all this detail out here in the West? I mean, nobody had even explored there yet. And so here's another map, and I'm gonna use this map to tell a migration story. And I know it's gonna be really hard to read on this map, so I've done what I can to make it a little bit easier to read. I, I, first of all, I zoom in, and then I will write the names of some of these tribes on here. Now again, I'm gonna show about twenty frames real quickly. The details don't matter very much. You could probably make the details up reasonably accurately. The overall picture is what matters. Um, remember, this is about sixteen fifty, but the Dutch had started selling guns to the Iroquois. In sixteen twenty-six, when they established the Ford and Albany. And through the sixteen thirties and forties, the fur traders were trading guns to the Iroquois. The Iroquois used those weapons to push both north and south and to capture lands from other people. That pushed the Huron people to move further west, and between the Iroquois and the Huron, they basically exterminated the Erie and the Neutral People. They've killed them all off, basically. Uh, stole their wives and children, made them part of the tribe. When the Huron moved into Michigan, the Sauk and the Fox and the Winnebago people moved west around Lake Michigan. The Iroquois kept getting bigger and bigger. Now they're pushing up against the Ottawa people. But remember, the Ottawa had already been pushed here a hundred years earlier by a different tribe, the Mohicans. And under pressure from the Iroquois, the Ottawa broke apart into two different groups. And one of them went up into northern Michigan, and the other one went south toward Ohio. There's actually a town in Ohio called Ottawa, Ohio, you know. When the Ottawa came into northern Michigan, the Potawatomi people decided that they would move south. I'm gonna stop this story for just a second here. All of these people that are being forced to move are being forced to learn new resources and new ways of life. I mean, imagine what it's like to be a Potawatomi person who is accustomed to doing fishing and fur trapping up in northern Michigan. Suddenly finding themselves down in Kalamazoo where. The world is uh, quite different. Meanwhile, the Ojibwe people are pushing into Wisconsin, and they're forcing the Dakota people to move west. This raises a kind of an interesting uh. Current events question. You might have read about how the Dakota people are claiming that the Black Hills are their. The ancient sacred places. But they've only been in the Black Hills region for about forty years. They actually lived in Wisconsin at the beginning. And the Iroquois people, getting stronger and stronger, were conducting raids all the way to Illinois. Pushing the Miami people to move south. So when you read about an initial Abbe migration story. What you are getting is the initial Abbe view of what it was like to. What you are getting is the initial Abbey view of what it was like to move great distances. But you might not have known that the reason that they were moving was that they were being pushed out. By other tribes that were getting weapons from the Europeans and just being more effective. And different groups, Nation Abbey have different migration stories. This one talks about going around the southern end of Lake Michigan. This one talks about going on the Ottawa River directly to Lake Huron, not getting anywhere near Michigan. And the story that you sometimes hear about the three fires. Well, there's a map that shows how the three fires came about. And the map that you got in a downloadable package that is part of the. Of the third grade set. Again, we've got a generalization that has to come out of this. Because these migration stories get linked with more complicated legends, like the legend of the seven prophecies. Which is what you would see if you go to a museum and uh, up at Central Michigan University in Isabella County, near the Isabella Reservation. Okay, that was the drink out of the fire hose. This is the map that we found. That was based by a group of about twenty people that assembled hundreds of archaeological sites and primary sources. That's the map that we used to make the village maps that are on your clickable uh. Map done on the website. Okay, need now have an idea where that map came from. The conclusions that you would get out of this section. It took almost two hundred years just to get the number of Great Lakes right. It took three hundred years to get the shape of Michigan right. Point number three, indigenous people moved often and often quite far. And when they moved, they were moving into places where they had to develop new ways of living. They had to deal with new resources. Maps that show the territories of native people before the eighteen hundreds should probably be viewed with suspicion. We just don't have information about that. The very first map that shows the native people's lands actually show the initial Abbey people as living in. Eastern Canada, northern New York. When Dutch fruit traders started selling guns to the Iroquois in the sixteen thirties. That started a long line of falling dominos. And that, those dominos had a lot of consequences. Like I said, it's, it was tough because the people were basically refugees. They were being forced out of their homes. They were having to learn how to live in a new environment. That means that we have at least five different migration stories. We have at least seven different categories of migration legends connected to prophecies. The legend about the seven fires was actually recorded in nineteen eighty-eight. In other words, if you go back a hundred years to an early history of the Odawa. And Joy will talk a little bit about it because Andrew Blackburn, in writing this history. He has a couple pages about the, the none of us shall. Legends. He's got a page about the earth diver legend. He's got a page about Shingebis legend, other stories. That we use, but he doesn't mention the seven prophecies at all. There is no record of a seven prophecy legend. Alright, anyway. When we were trying to put together the readings. That support these stories about migration and so on. We've looked at several hundred sites. Like I say, I lived about two miles away from the little, little red schoolhouse in Minneapolis for twenty years. And I've, the initial Abbey archives are at the University of Minnesota Library where I'm still on the faculty members there. This has been a story that I've been looking at for about thirty years. The, then the, the references that we have found. Go all the way from thirteen moons on turtle's back, which is really a very reliable. A set of legends that are based on primary documents. All the way down to things like the legend of the lady slipper. Which is a really fun story. Kids like it a lot. The only thing that it is not is an authentic Indian legend. This thing got, basically got made up in the late twentieth century. Uh, and. This has been a real challenge. Joy has been remarkable in wading through. Uh, different versions of the Nanabush stories in order to come up with a. What might be the best one to present? And she'll talk about that a little bit later on. Like I say, she just coined, pointed me as bad cop here for a minute. I'm the one that's supposed to say this, but in fact, I'm not the one saying this. There have been a handful of Venetian Abbey people who have written articles specifically mentioning. Some books like the legend of the lady slipper as being not authentic legends. So that's your double drink out of a fire hose. And Joy is waving a couple more of these books. Like I say, she will talk a little bit about how we went about selecting them. My job here was to put the migration stories into context. They were complicated stories by people who were being forced out of their homes. One of the casualties of a complicated story is that oral traditions get disrupted. And that brings to the end of stop, share the screen. And Lindsay's face is on the screen there.
Thanks, Phil.
You might have noticed we turned the two around. The joy had talked before me a little bit, so I think we're still sort of on time here. Um, I would be happy to answer any question. I also have a question for you guys, and that is. Would you like some version of this stack of maps? Or that animation that showed the movements of some of these tribes? And if so, just either put it in the chat or send me an email. Or we could talk about it during the breakout sessions later on. I would like some advice if you think you wanted to use any of this that you saw as content background. Let me know so that I know how to package it.
Um, one of the activities in unit two is using um, some resource cards. That I had mentioned earlier, you might need to prep ahead of time. So I just created that activity on a jam board and I've never done this with. Real live humans before, so it might not work out. Um, but we're gonna try to kind of mimic the activity on a jam board. So before you head to the jam board, um, what you're going to do is you're going to see a stack of resource cards. And you're going to pretend that those are the resources that you have available to you. So there's a um, set of questions on the jam board around what would you eat? Um, the resources you might use to make shelter. How would you stay warm in the winter? If we lived in Florida, we wouldn't have to worry about this, but we don't. We live in Michigan. So really, how would you stay warm? Using what resources in the winter? And then just thinking about um, some items that you might use to make clothing or tools. Maybe even thinking ahead some items you might use for trade. And then think too, um, I put in there, how might you use the waterways? So for some of you, you might not have any, anything that points to waterways, but you might also think a little bit about that. So I'm gonna put you in some breakout rooms. I see someone found the jam board. Um, I'm gonna put you in some breakout rooms and the breakout room you're in is going to match the page on the jam board. So if you're in room one, you're gonna look at page one. If you're in room two, you'll look at page two and I'll just show you really quickly. So up here at the top of the screen, you can swipe between pages. Up near the top, so if you're in room one, you'll look at page one. If you're room two, you'll look at page two. So you're just gonna talk with your um, with your colleagues around some of the questions on your screen. And we'll take about ten minutes to do this work. Might you have any questions before I send you off? Alright.
I unmuted or, but I muted, so. We had in our group some good conversation about the activity overall. Uh, we were wondering about the length of time. Um, you know, it was brought up, maybe ten minutes would be too much for third graders, or maybe it's the perfect amount. Um, we started struggling after a few minutes, but we were adults who went right to, oh, I'd use the nuts for this. Or we would, you know, eat the corn and we would do, you know, so. Um, overall, I think our, our group enjoyed the activity and I, as not a third grade teacher. Um, you know, I could see myself doing something similar with middle schoolers, so.
I, at first I thought it was too much time. But then when you threw in the question about, okay, so now which tribe do you think you are? First of all, I thought we had to stay on our slide and we couldn't look at the other slides. So um, once we were told to look at slide four and choose which tribe we thought we were. And then relating that to the unit one maps, that would definitely extend and enrich the activity, so.
So this is um, in the units, this is actually like a, a paper activity. It's not on jam board. I just put it on jam board so that you all could experience it. And in your, um, when you teach this, kids will actually have the picture cards with the different resources. And you might even introduce the idea of trade. So one group was talking a lot about the copper that they had. And they were like, well, we're not sure how we would use this. So in your classrooms, when kids are kind of talking and wrestling with like, well, what do we do with this? Then they might naturally come up with the idea of, well, I don't have something I need. So I could use this thing that I maybe don't need and trade it for something else. So um, in your classrooms, this activity will look a little bit different. Um, and it'll be more, there will be some, um, an activity or worksheet for students to kind of do some writing and some reflecting. Um, and then they'll be kind of looking at and even trading those, those resource cards. Um, so one, a couple of things I want to highlight with this activity, um, when you do it with your students. So you may have noticed that, um, well, Joy had her notebook, so she had a little bit of a cheat sheet. But you may have noticed that a lot of the resources kind of um, followed. The resources available on the clickable maps. And in unit one, if you spent some time talking about regions and going through that making a regions PowerPoint. Students will be really familiar with this kind of line that cuts across our state. That kind of separates different resources and they're going to start to internalize those different regions. So in your classroom, you might give them access to the clickable maps or have them with their notebooks open. So that they can um, reference those maps when they're thinking about, well, where do I think I could have lived? If these were the things that were available to me, um, and, and what, um, what group may I have belonged to? If I, for example, could have lots of, of crops and um, lots of different types of nuts. So that's one way you might bring in the work from unit one to kind of support this. Uh, um, kind of overview of resources in unit two. So I would suggest kind of having um, those, those resources, the resource maps out and available. Or giving your kids access to the clickable map. And then you can always revisit that making your regions PowerPoint that comes up in unit one towards the end. That's always a great one to look back to if your students are kind of still wrestling with the idea of regions. Any um, big questions so far about that activity or about resources in unit two? So one more thing I wanted to mention too is that um, when you're introducing unit one or unit two. And you're reading a little bit from the Burt's Park House, your students are gonna hear about some of the chores that the main character does in that book. And I, I always found when I taught this unit, that that was like a really great way to help kids connect to people who lived a long time ago. Um, cause the notion of chores for some kids is like, oh, I just love the dishwasher and I'm done. Um, but they'll see in that story that this girl does a day's worth of chores and that's her life. And so when you do the resource cards activity, you might even bring that back up and you might say. You know, if you lived in a place that had a lot of walnuts, what do you think a chore may have been for a, a, a child your age? And that will kind of help them make some deeper connections to the, the way of life for people who. They may not be able to connect with right away. Does that make sense? Okay, let me just check how we're doing on time. Alright, we are on time. So we're gonna have a little bit of time tonight to um, just kind of connect and look through some resources. While you have support from us. I um, really like that Dave. Dave, Dave has a walnut tree too. Um, so we're gonna take some time to just look through unit two and just do a little bit of a Q and A. So we'll give you some time to comb through the unit. I do have a couple of questions here that you might think about as you're looking through the unit. So you might just skim through and just kind of get an overview of how the lessons will build on each other. Knowing that there's going to be lots of places where skills and understandings overlap. Um, you might also look for places where you see um, skills or knowledge connected to the supporting question of that lesson. I always like to take a peek at how students will practice the work that we're trying. And then thinking about what are some things that might need to be prepared ahead of time? So when it's time for you to teach this unit, you're ready to go. So we're going to have, um, I think we'll have about fifteen minutes. Let me just check here. Yeah, let's take, we're a little bit out of schedule, so let's take about fifteen minutes to just start looking through the unit. And then if you need some more time, we've got a little bit of a buffer. Um, and then we'll just be here if you have any questions or if you need help finding anything. So we'll just take fifteen minutes to kind of work independently and then come back together. Alright, so before we start with our next book talk, um, did anyone have any big questions or? Big ideas that they wanted to share out with the group while we're all here together?
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for um, putting and researching. Just in expressing all these resources that are out there because. I'm really struggling with picking the right resources. And there's a lot out there that, um, no, this is great. It's like, then I'll research it and it's like, no, it's not. Um, you know, it's, uh, so I'm still in that learning process of um. What is, you know. Correctly, it, what's the correct legends and stories and so. I really appreciate being able to look through that and, and have stuff that I know that has already been looked at and. Um, just deemed worthy of correctness. And portraying the true. Knowledge.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. It, it was real, that was something that was really important to us when we were adding. Um, literature connections to the units is to make sure that they were respectful and that they were vetted properly. So that, um, we know, we, we knew we could endorse them for teachers, because we know you don't have the time to do all that research on your own. So thanks for sharing that. Any big questions um, about the unit or anything you noticed in there that you might want to ask now? Before we go on to our next part? Yeah, Karen.
Um, okay, so hmm, I think it was lesson three. And there's the, the tree cutting down guy. Forgot all the names ever.
Farmer Shrum.
Yep, and the next one. Uh, crooked, crooked lines. Um, so those two lessons. I'm, I'm thinking maybe I'm gonna print the map. The, just, I think it was like the last link and it's just the actual map. I'm gonna print that in color. I'm gonna print that in color on cardstock, then laminate them and then give them colored markers. So they can do the farmer stump one and they can draw the lines and write the words or write the letters and all that. And then we can erase it and we can do the crooked lines one. So we can, I don't know, spot.
Karen, I'm so glad that you're here with us tonight cuz you have just been packed full of ideas. Every time you've been talking, you've been sharing some great ideas. So thanks for sharing that idea with us. That's a great way to use that resource.
That's because I'm old.
No.
Even older today.
Just flies, just flies. Alright, so we'll keep going. Um we'll turn it over to Joy, who's gonna do another book talk. And she's gonna talk a little bit about um using authentic literature and also about some resources that you you might find in the unit.
Okay, well, um I'm I um one of the things I wanna talk about is just like the um new um. The newly approved standards that we have. And so in that, one of the things that was really important to us. Was under the history of Michigan was to draw upon traditional stories of American Indians, specifically the Anishinaabe, the Ojibwe. The Odawa, the Potawatomi. And so um because of that, um you know. I know that Kathy Jo Worgen has written some wonderful books and I'm not saying that you can't use her books. But we're trying to stay away from using that as that that's a legend that's authentic. She's written some great books and use, I know that you've all seen some of these books. There's the Legend of Lelandon. And this is another version of the Legend of the Lady Slipper, the Legend of the Loon, the Legend of Sleeping Bear. And even the Legend of Mackinac Island. There's the Legend of the Petoskey Stone. And I will still read these in my classroom, but with um with an understanding of, I don't necessarily read these. With social studies. I read these as like I'm teaching a new genre. Um and what a legend is, is a story passed down from one generation to another generation. Um part of that is because when you really um are digging to find true authentic uh legends. That are authentic to the uh Anishinaabe, you don't find many that A are written down. Um a lot of times they're told in a um it's a sacred um ceremony. Um it's also sometimes not appropriate. There may be some private parts getting cut off, things like that. If you truly look at some of these, it's just not third grade appropriate. So we talked to um Eric Hemingway, who is an indigenous person who's been like a mentor for us throughout um. Different parts of writing about this. And you know, he's shared some different things and uh and he's found that it it's hard to find some things too. We do have some that are written down um in the in the um unit. But we also have the one that we have that's actually a book is Shingebus. And um again, it Shingebus is not necessarily my favorite. Um but it is more of a true authentic Ojibwe legend that is been vetted. And does fit the curriculum needs much better than the Legend of the of the Mackinac. Um island and things like that. So again, I I'm not saying not to read those, but don't use those. As authentic resources um because they're not. They're they're pretty much made up. Um so we really focus on on this book. And we're always, always, always looking to find true authentic um Ojibwe or Odawa. Or Potawatomi legends uh that would be appropriate for third grade. So um yeah, did you wanna say something Kathy?
No, Karen.
Karen, sorry, sorry Karen.
It's okay. Um so I I don't have that book in my classroom. Is it linked? Or cuz I can buy it, but I just found it on Amazon for sixty-four dollars. This is kind of.
Yeah, don't spend that. I felt like I I would have to double check, but I thought I included it. Because it is on um, I wanna say YouTube, but it is where you can just have it read to be prepared. It is a slow moving story to be read like that. But I mean, I think sometimes that's part of the Ojibwe. I think that's part of that culture, you know what I mean? Because it was meaningful, it was purposeful and just like like what Eric had talked to before, it was sacred. Um you did it at a a at certain times of of rites of passage. Or certain ages that you reach this pinnacle. Um and then those are some, those are times that you might be told. The specific legend. So in just a minute, I'll go back and double check to see where I have it. Cuz I have, like, right now my voice is gone, so I wouldn't necessarily read this, but I might. But I I and then I know that I have shown it before. So anyway, I'll look back at that, but yeah, don't spend sixty-four dollars. And see, that's the other, that's the issue that we've come up with, um come up against is finding a book that is just. Um you know, somewhat relatable in the modern world. Like, has somebody written about it recently and that it's truly authentic? Is it in print? You know, is it in the English language? You know, a variety of things. So um but we just keep going back to that standard because that's truly um, we wanna be. We wanna be responsible and and purposeful with that. So I'm glad you asked that. We'll keep um and we'll look into that. Um and get back to you on that. If I can, I'll try to find it and link it in here also in a minute. Um but the other thing that we wanna talk about, Lindsay, are you able to pull up the PDF of the um of Alexander Henry? So we wanna talk about Alexander Henry right now. That is, I I have actually downloaded that and made that into a little booklet in my classroom. Alexander Henry is a really rare, rare, rare primary resource that third graders have. It is written in a third grade language. It is um, the readability is there. I'm gonna see if I can pull this up and then um. Alright, can we do a screen? I'm gonna kind of walk through this.
Joy, you 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 can share your screen. Um yeah, there you go.
Can you see it now? So the live uh in the, what ha- what has happened is here's Alexander Henry. He has been captured. He's been kidnapped. He is a white person and he has been kidnapped into this indigenous tribe. And in this indigenous tribe, he is gone. It this is in seventeen sixty-three and this is very rare to have a primary resource like this. And he kept a diary of the year that he was captured and the location of where they went. What they did within a year span. So that's something that um I we really definitely um worked into. This unit. Um and you can see right here, you have a timeline. You have a a map of a year in the life of Alexander Henry. And um he was a fur trader. You can see down here that um in seventeen sixty-three. A group of Ojibwe captured him. He was treated very kindly, but a couple of other things. Um if you'll see, he was, he says. He was captured and one of the first things that they, he says in this diary, his. This is the family that adopted him. They cut off his long hair and they shaved most of his head. And um with that, there are a couple of other books that we have used in the classroom. Um to really kind of talk about the injustice of the indigenous people. When they were sent to mostly Catholic schools. And there are two books in particular that I I read. Or encourage my students to read. One one is called When I Was Eight. And this little girl so desperately wants to go and um to school. And once she gets there, they both cut off her hair. That's the one of the first things that they do. So it's just a good connection of just um hair was is sacred to indigenous people. Another book is called I'm Not a Number. That book is also bilingual and it is in the Ojibwe language. So both of those are books also that we kind of use to um to kind of go along with this. That um they cut off his hair and they did that that same um act. And what it represented uh to the indigenous people. Um and they'd said what they gave him, this right here. They gave me a shirt that was painted with vermilion, just a good vocabulary um boost there. It was mixed with grease. Um and so what we've done in here, we've taken this page right here. Um and I put this, we put this in, first of all, this is a map of his travels. So you can um use different color um colored pencils or things like that to kind of mark that. And then right here. We've added it and then you can see where we can use that description and we can color the different things. And just focus on some adjectives and how you can describe, how what what words are they using to describe? This um Alexander Henry. Um and then like a wampum um collar. And um they even talk about a wampum belt uh right here, which kind of ties in with Pontiac's Rebellion. And there's a link in the um in the uh under this section also that you can click on. If you wanted to like even make a wampum belt, you know, and some other pictures that kind of support that. This is a really good resource also, and I I would not do this all at once. I would di- divide this up a little bit. But you can see like, these are his summer travels. You use this is a great opportunity to use um mapping skills. Directional skills. Um and you know, there's some, you know, you stop and ask some questions um throughout this um story. And um just talk about why did they go to these places in the summer? What was there that would be a draw for them? Um you know, they talk about the different fish over here and they talk about the sturgeon. Um some of my students are big fishers, fishermen, so they can talk about that a little bit as well. Um and then we talk about the autumn jobs a little bit. And we've got some math skills in here. And a bushel of corn, what that would be like. Um and just the maize. Or corn is such a huge um draw in this area. And again, you've got the mapping skills uh to kind of support that and go along with that. And it 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 you're going to summer, autumn, and then you're you're going um. Why, you know, like, why do you think the family moved away from the coast of Lake Michigan to make their camp? Um and what would be the draw there? What do you think they would eat at all of these places? Um and it's just a great way to just help with critical thinking skills. And I I'm always amazed at what my third graders come up with and just how they utilize uh their prior knowledge. And just things that we've done, especially earlier in the unit, where would I build my village and why? So they kind of tap into some of those things, what worked as well. Um and and we have uh, we're lucky enough in our area to have a couple of places where students can go. To actually do um experience some of these things and um how did they travel? Snowshoes, they can go to the Outdoor Discovery Center, do some um snow shoeing, different things like that. Um yeah, um how, you know, like, just give us some examples along the way. Wawa Tom and his son killed an elk, took two days to cut up and dry the elk meat over the campfire. Then we continued their journey. Um the role of the different animals, you've got elk, you've got bear. Um you know, and just uh all the different pieces of this, of what his life was like within one year. And what they did with all the different pieces, the fat of the bear. You know, you had the hides, you had um the meat. Um you know, I'd be curious, you know, to ask the kids like, where do they store the meat? Where did they um? You know, did, how much, how much meat um did they probably get from an elk? How many people would that feed? For how long? It'd just be interesting to see some of those things because they didn't just put it in their freezer. Uh their deep freeze in the back, you know, cuz they didn't have a deep freezer. Um again, Alexander Henry's moving again through winter. Um and where they go, um a four thousand pounds of dried venison, how would they carry that? Um uh that's one way to even talk about in a canoe, how much a canoe would carry. Um versus a human. Uh and that's one one reason the fur traders did use that as a source of transportation. Excuse me. We get into the spring a little bit now, it's sugaring time. And uh we get to go to a place locally in in Highland where you can actually experience the maple sugaring. So this is just a really good resource because it is a um primary resource from the early se- from the seventeen hundreds. That you just don't find very much and written in the third grade language. And just the fact that he, you know, kids are always like, what? He was kidnapped? Yeah. And he was, you know, within a whole year. Just what they did and why, why would they go there? And it's got a good gloss really gonna go along with this, great mapping skills, like I said earlier. It just um does a lot of different things. Fort Michigan Milla Mackinac is uh, there's a link in there that you can go to. To um see what it's like today and do a um a comparison a little bit. So it's really cool. So this is a good resource that we do use a a lot. Like I said, I would break this down a little bit. I would not teach this all at once. But that is um a resource that uh you can also make into a booklet and um or break it down like this one right here. Like I just took this page and put that and this 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 map right here into our social studies notebook. So that you can see what that's like. So anyway, I hope that helps a little bit and that's also in there as well. And I'll go back and look at that um Shingebus and uh some of these other things as well. So any questions at all?
Joy, I was gonna jump in really quick. Um so this is available, the Alexander Henry booklet is available as a PDF. And it's linked right in the units, so you'll see it there. Um and then it's also linked in the units as an editable um PowerPoint. So if you um, we kind of developed that during remote learning. So if you wanted to just print off one page that your students could have some space to write on, you could use the PDF. Or you could also go to the PowerPoint file. Or if you want your kids to work electronically through that workbook, you can use the PowerPoint. The Microsoft's or the Google Slides file. So it's there in two ways. Um and I wanted to just say one more thing about Alexander Henry that I know Joy said earlier. Um it's like one of the few primary sources that we have that's really age appropriate and readable for third graders. So it's a really important resource to make sure you pull in in one way or the other. Knowing that um helping kids think about sourcing is a really important skill. We want them to start learning at an early age. So we would just encourage you to find um one way to use it either in its entirety or bits and pieces throughout the throughout the whole unit. And that's the, Joy's got the PowerPoint version up right there.
Yeah, and like this is where I was saying earlier, if you wanted to learn more about the wampum belts, you know, that's the link that goes along with it. Um but it's just broken down a little differently here and you can just use these as guiding questions just to have discussion and break apart. Um so this is just another source that you can use as well. And more information to support what's going on in here as well. So yeah, hope that helped.
Um and then one other resource that you are gonna see throughout all the units is my open book, which we talked a little bit about last time. Um but we would just encourage you again to kind of lean on my open book for some extra literature connections. And knowing that there's a lot of interactives in there um and some really cool features that your kids can interact with while they're learning some content. Um just know that my open book pages that are relevant to each lesson will be linked in the right hand column. Um and that you should always preview that resource ahead of time because it is kind of lengthy and it's a little clunky to get your kids there. So just always make sure you preview ahead of time. So just always make sure you preview ahead of time so you know what you're getting into. Um we're going to look a little bit at um two of the activities towards the end of the unit. So if we kind of think about our big story, we start by like helping kids envision. What was life like for indigenous people a long time ago as well as today? And that's really like an introduction for for a lot of our students because they don't really have a frame of reference for indigenous people. So we're introducing them to this culture and these people. And then in the second lesson, um we're really thinking about what are the resources in Michigan? And how do resources kind of impact the way you live? And then finally, in the third lesson, we're really getting kids set up for the idea of trade. So knowing that if you have an abundance of a certain resource, that's going to be an advantage for you. Not just for your way of life, but it's also going to open up access to other places because now you can trade what you have left over. So Phil is gonna um share a little bit about how to use a couple of those activities towards the end of the unit. The Farmer Shrumph and the Crooked Borders. And these are two activities that are really gonna launch you into Unit Three. So go ahead, Phil.
So this is how Farmer Shrumph actually got started. I went to a MCSS meeting, I don't know, about seven years ago. And they were talking about building a bridge on the highway department and then when. Went over this bridge, they had uncovered an archaeological site that was kind of interesting. Uh at the same time, I had in the back of my mind that one of the glicks was about. Where is Michigan in the United States? Uh where is the United States in the world? That we're supposed to be building some of this basic geographic vocabulary. Um and we've seen these puzzles. I've got two pictures up on the screen, one from a Montessori school and one from this famous outfit. Called Melissa and Doug. Uh the problem with these is I've been reading a lot of neuroscience lately and. This is actually the least effective brain network for spatial learning. But if you really want to teach about that, so that was one thing. So we were looking for a better way. To give them a basic idea of where Michigan was in the world. And then this highway department archaeological site presentation kind of intrigued us a little bit. Oh, and by the way, Shrumph is a real name. It does exist. And with that, I'm gonna open up the stage on those PowerPoints. To talk a little bit about how one might use it. Now Karen earlier said that she printed up something and laminated it. And that's one possibility. We've also got United States floor maps and kids can draw on those. As they're doing this. Or Joy said, just give them a United States map. Of which we've got one, you know, in the margins there of the resources. And have them put that in their notebook. And then when they finish drawing these lines, they've got a permanent record of that. But this is not exactly Farmer Shrumph stump. In fact, this is the elm tree in my front yard in Minnesota. Uh but the farmer wound up having to get rid of his tree stump in his field. If you have downloaded this PowerPoint, you might notice that the wording on the screen right now is a little bit different than what you see. Uh I wanted to do this deliberately to show you something about our PowerPoints. The original wording came from the highway department and they talked about uncovering a bunch of bones underneath this tree. That turns out to be a little bit problematic with some cultural groups for which. Archaeological sites are actually a kind of a desecration of their burial sites. So we changed the wording on that about three weeks ago. I put this up deliberately to say, a lot of our PowerPoints are that way. If you used it last year. You might want to check to make sure that a new version hasn't come up on screen. The show version I'm showing you right now has not been uploaded yet, so it will be uploaded sometime in the next couple of weeks, right Dave? Anyway. So now it talks more about arrowheads and other artifacts. That were found underneath the stump. And he thought these things must be really old because they've been there before the tree started growing. It was a big old tree. Along with these artifacts, they did find some bones. And we can learn a lot about the people to find by looking at what they bury along with their burial sites. Next to some of the skulls, for example, he found some tin tubes made out of copper. And now I'm gonna just kind of race through this. You've got this PowerPoint. I'm gonna stop only at the frames that. Have got a little bit of a geographic message on there. Uh you know. You'd have to try to figure out what a little piece of copper was used for. And we're lucky here because somebody had actually made a drawing back in the eighteen hundreds that showed that. Copper tubes were part of the hair ornament. And the fact that you found some next to some skulls buried underneath the stump. So the scientists decided that this must be a burying place for the indigenous people long ago. You now know, though, based on my previous presentation. That this is at least five hundred years before the Inishina'abi came here. In other words, this is a completely different group of indigenous people that were part of it. So Karen said she'd use a laminated map. I might try a floor map. Other people print it out. So that students can make a permanent copy. Uh you might want to try different ways of using this. But the important point is that the student should somehow record this information. Because that's where they're going to be learning the locations of the states, the locations of the rivers and things like that. So we start by writing a a. And here, the PowerPoint is always too long. I don't know if you want to have these answers in the PowerPoint. Or that you just want to delete this frame out of it and go with the questions. And uh. In any case, the PowerPoint is always a little bit too long. Because it responded to a lot of teacher comments. And one of them said we ought to make a little joke about shrimp stump. You know, it's kind of a hard thing to say five times in a row. And if you try that out with your kids, you might lighten up of of, you know, a bleak November day sometime. In any case, the copper tubes came from the Kiwanau Peninsula. And again, this frame is a little bit different. Because once we have been required to make a change, or we've decided it's important to make a change. Then we go through the whole PowerPoint and see if we can simplify the language, clarify it a little bit. And here we split this out to say, the Kiwanau Peninsula is defined. It's a thin finger of land. It's about right there. It then goes on to talk about how the Inishina'abi people used canoes to get around. And it asks the student, if you had a canoe, how would you get from place K to place S? And you want them to realize that they're gonna have to go through the Suse Marie and the Straits of Mackinac in order to get there. The PowerPoint doesn't talk about those, but if you've already mentioned that this is a good time to bring those words in again. Just as kind of reinforcement as to where those things are. It asks about how far it is so that they actually use the scale of miles. You may or may not want that math link. Now, they found thousand arrowheads, knives, and flints and other things like that. And Flint comes from Southern Illinois. So we park a F down in Southern Illinois where Flint comes from. It's near the Mississippi River. Louisiana is really easy to find. It's a big boot. Try to draw the Mississippi River on your map. At this point, one teacher suggested they would actually make a writing activity out of it. What if you put your canoe in the river in Minnesota? And you paddled all the way down to Louisiana. You should write about the different states that you see on each side. This is where the student actually will learn the locations of the state much more efficiently than by matching their shapes with a puzzle. When they're talking about what states the river is between. And what state do you find next? You're engaging other brain networks that work a little bit better. And if you've wanted to get that flint up to Farmer Shroomph, you'd take it along the route like that. Then this thing goes on and it says. Um you know, they found some she- seashells that came from Texas and Louisiana. How do you get them up? Here, so we're gonna have to draw a canoe route to get them up there. And then we found some pipe stone. Our pipe stone from Minnesota actually got sold all over North America. You can find pieces of it out in Washington, out in Maine, in Florida. For our purposes, they had to figure out how to get that. Unfortunately, the Minnesota River does a nice job of connecting to the Mississippi. Or if you didn't want to go that way, you could take the Big Sioux River into the Missouri. In either case. When you keep adding one resource after another, and the fact that they were all found in Western Michigan. You know, so let's find the buffalo. They came out of Kansas and Nebraska. So we put a bee out in those places. And find the nearest river, put a canoe on them. And some digging stones from Ohio, going along the Ohio River. You wind up with a map that looks something like that. It's a great big tree. And we could have a really good geographic discussion right now as to where would you put your master trading post? I mean, where would you put your Amazon warehouse in order to serve all these stores? As it turns out, about a thousand years ago, they built a trading city. It had at one time about fifty thousand people living there in a place called Cahokia. What you might not know is that the pyramid that they built at Cahokia, I mean, this is actually. The people built this hill. This is on a perfectly flat plain. And this hill has got as much dirt in it as the Great Pyramid in Egypt has. It's it's as big as the Great Pyramid in Egypt. If you ever are in the neighborhood of Cahokia, you really need to go to that National Park there. It's got one of the best visitor centers I've ever seen. There's a person standing next to the hill. And Cahokia was a major trading center, bringing together all of these different resources from different directions. Now, you could use a scale of miles to estimate which one came farther if you want to make a math lesson. But again, I want to point out that these PowerPoints are maybe longer than you want to do it any one day. You might want to do this on another day or maybe not even do it at all. Um you've got a delete key on your computer. So what did we learn from Farmer Shroomph stump is that. A thousand years ago, indigenous people in North America traveled long distances and trading many things. And they started that trading long before any explorers and so on came from Europe. We also, in the process of doing this, learned or reviewed where some states and important rivers are located. And that leads us to the other PowerPoint. If you were not sure that the students actually got. As much of the message as you want, this is a supplementary one. The question, of course, is which one do you do first? And I don't know the answer to that. You might want to try it out both ways. But crooked rivers, crooked borders, it turned out to be an engaging activity for kids. Uh this is the Menominee River. It's a part of the border between Wisconsin and the UP. And you could give the kids a blank map or a blank map with the names on it, and we give you both options. People have drawn these borders in lots of different ways. I mean, some of them are just straight lines. Other borders are crooked. And you've got a map like this with the names of the forty-eight states that you could put on. Uh trivia fact is there's only one place where four states actually come together in one point, the area called Four Corners. Joy tells me she's actually visited there and has a picture, but I don't think she's ever sent that to me. In a lot of places, people decided that a river would be a decent border between two states. The problem is rivers don't go straight. Uh this is a curve on the Ohio River with a great big power plant down there. It marks the border between Ohio, West Virginia, and Kentucky. And students could trace that crooked border. My question for you is, would you like more of this kind of interrogation question built into the PowerPoint? My teacher had asked for this one. We put one of them in, but there's lots of other places that we could add there. Is there a design to Mississippi? We've already tried drawing the Mississippi once, but it's probably been not a bad idea to draw it again. And then there it goes. The Missouri River cuts across Missouri. And actually, we could stretch that a lot. The Minnesota River cuts across Minnesota, the Iowa River cuts across Iowa. The Arkansas River cuts across Arkansas, the Kentucky River, the Tennessee River. These other rivers often mark borders between different states, but they. They also continue on straight through. When we get out to the west, where a lot of state borders were just square. And they could trace the Missouri River. This is another one of these little historic mentions. They may not know who Lewis and Clark is. They may not remember Lewis and Clark, but if you mention Lewis and Clark. Then when they show up in fifth or eighth grade and they actually get to Lewis and Clark, they will have heard it once before. And that having heard it once before would make it a little bit easier for them to remember. So the Giants curriculum of God has got a lot of those little things kind of built into it. Um and you just have to decide how many of them are appropriate for your class on a particular day. There may be days you just want to skip that over. Like to talk about some of these other rivers. You may want to just stop with the Ohio, Mississippi, and Missouri. And leave off some of the other rivers. The Colorado is particularly interesting because it goes by these desert states and it makes the Grand Canyon. And in a typical class, you might have two or three people that have actually seen the Grand Canyon. Gives them an opportunity to talk about it a little bit. Like the Savannah River. I had to put that in here because Joyce from South Carolina, and so we just had to mention that one time. But Savannah's on the Georgia side of it. And then finally, the Potomac River, a little bitty river, but it still marks the border between a handful of states. And has the nation's capital located on it. And the shortest name, the Red River, is the border for the biggest state, Texas. Actually, be back up to that one. This is another frame that you may or may not want to use at all. Is can you find some more rivers that make borders between states? Like there's one down here in Louisiana, or there's one up here in Upper New York. You may or may not want to add the frame like that, in which case delete it out. Because you do want to get back to remembering the names of the big rivers. To Mississippi. And I would probably stop right there and take out these other little ones. Because you do also want to make the point that some crooked borders follow mountains. They don't follow rivers. And this gives you a couple examples of that, but it gives the student a chance to look at some places that are far away from. The central part. And this gives you a couple examples of that, but it gives the student a chance to look at some places that are far away from the central part here. The bonus that comes out of this activity, if you want to use it. It is if you want to remember the location of something like either a state or a river. Think of some other places that it's near or between. Because those networks work much more effectively in promoting long-term memories than the shape network does. Unless the shape is really distinctive, like Louisiana is a boot. But if you've got shapes like North Dakota and South Dakota where they're pretty close to each other. It's easier to remember which ones next to or between other states than it is to try to remember the shapes. And that's one of the purposes of this particular activity. Is to give kids a little bit more interesting way. Of learning the basic shapes and the locations of two or three rivers. So, that is that one. Like I say, it came out because a good archaeological site happened to be discovered and reported. And we had a problem of meeting a glitch about the locating rivers and locating the states. That was uh, kind of tough to do in the way that people used to do it.
So I want to add on um, to something Phil said about um, using the PowerPoints. So when you um, when you click, oftentimes when you click on a link in the units. If it's um, a Google Doc or a Google slide, it's going to force you to make a copy of those resources. And so um. I'm gonna just pull up. So one thing I like to do because I'm always worried that if I delete a slide, like Phil said, I, if, if it's gone, it's gone forever. So one thing you can do, and you might already know this, is if you right-click on a slide. You can say skip slide so that when you're sharing the PowerPoint with kids. If you want to skip some of those um, frames that Phil had mentioned, when you go to share it. Um, it will just go right past that slide. So that's one um, strategy you can use. And then I, I talked to some teachers who said that they always put notes down here. If for them, for themselves so that they know like, okay, this year on this slide. Took this, took a little bit longer, so you might want to skip it next year or this slide was confusing. So that's just another way that you can um, use the PowerPoints to kind of meet your needs. Um, but just know that if you, if you um. Once you make that copy of the slide, it's yours to, to kind of revise however you'd like. And so you can skip the slides, you can delete the slides. Uh, and then Dave, just as Dave said, you could always go back um, and restore an older version if you need to. So any questions about that?
And remember, if you've been using a PowerPoint that's two or three or four years old, you might want to check whether there's an updated version that's been put in. Like I said, the updated versions aren't going to remake the entire story. What they do do though is, is to improve some of the wording. And uh, respond to particular uh, comments that have been made by groups of teachers. And if you've got comments on them, if you've got a suggestion for how a PowerPoint would work better, by all means, send that to us.
Um, I wanted to make a really quick comment about the unit two assessments. So. Um, when you open up the unit two folder, the main folder, there's an assessment document at the bottom and it's also linked at the end of each lesson. That has one document with all the assessments on it. So you can give it after each lesson. And just do the part for that lesson. Or you can give the whole thing at the very end of the unit. And there is an answer key connected to that. So that's just another piece that you might want to be aware of as you're planning.
I also added a couple other books that I had mentioned um, that uh, in the chat as well. Um, and one is um, the one that I'm not a number. That one is bilingual also. So just FYI.
All right. If there aren't any other questions, um, we'll just end a few minutes early tonight. Happy birthday Karen. This is your birthday gift from us. Um, but we'll stay on for a few minutes if anyone has any lingering questions that they want to hang around for. Otherwise, thank you so very much for taking the time to learn with us tonight and we are so excited to see you next time around.